Grand Blank Township, September 16th, 2021. Please rise and join us in a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag, to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's good to see a full planning commission here this evening. This has been awhile since we've been able to have everyone in attendance. So we have Ms. Hugo, Mr. Yoncho, Ms. Coulter, our latest addition to the planning commission, Mr. Hoffman, like an old penny, can't get rid of it.
That's right.
Mr. Johnson, Mr. Gellings, Mr. Banderski, Mr. Bush, and Mr. Anderson, our attorney, Mr. David Laddie, our planning and zoning administrator, Mr. Jeremy Smith. First item on our agenda would be approval of this evening's agenda, any changes?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda as written.
Motion by Mr. Banderski, support by Mr. Johnson. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes nine zero. No minutes to approve this evening, an opportunity for public comment. We do not have any public hearings this evening, so if anyone wants to address the planning commission, this would be the time.
I'm getting this low enough here. Um, excuse me. My name's Elaine Kilborn, I am a Grand Blank Township president. My mailing address is 3103 West Thompson Road, number 182 in Fenton, 48430. First of all, I want to say, if you guys overdevelop Grand Blank, you're going to lose what people want to move here for. So I wanted to get that out of the way. But my main comment tonight is about the master plan. And what I am requesting, which I know you're not going to want to hear it, is that you delay it for at least another year. There's nothing written in stone that you have to have it at certain year intervals. Usually you'll say 10 years, or maybe a five-year, sometimes you have a three-year update. But with the changes in the board, the changes in the planning commission, and COVID, you didn't have really any public meetings, you didn't have public hearings, you didn't have public input. And I'm sorry, I don't know, you had, you had a planning company with a subcommittee that only had a couple of the planning commissioners on it. You had other members from other committees and other commissions on it with the planning company. They don't represent us in Grand Blank Township. And I think that's kind of an example, is all the uproar you've had from the recent proposals that have been in front of you. People are upset, and they feel that the current zoning, or maybe master plan, isn't meeting what they're looking for in Grand Blank Township. So I'm requesting that you hold off, there's nothing that has to be done. You know, I know you guys are going to argue, oh, we sent out a survey, okay? There's a lot of people who couldn't, or wouldn't, or just could not do that survey online. I know you have papers, oh, they're not going to come up and fill out a survey paper. You didn't really have town halls, you had one working meeting that I saw, and then everything else went behind closed doors. I'm sure you all have been advised what some of the changes have been, but the public hasn't. And I'm sorry, I'm upset. I, I don't, I don't like behind closed door things. I've been on a planning commission, I've done two planning, master plans myself, so I know what I'm talking about. And I think it's a disgrace that more of the township hasn't been involved, or hasn't been notified of what your new changes are. So I'm requesting that you put it off for about another year. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments. I don't want to get into any arguments or discussions, but I've been on the planning commission for over 20 years, and we received more public comment on this amendment to the master plan than any other time that we've gone through multiple revisions. But anyway, anyone else that would like to speak and address the planning commission? Alright, we'll close the public comment portion, move on with our agenda, we don't have any correspondence, no old business. New business, says master plan update, public hearing, but there is no public hearing.
It was public hearing, I take that back. It was, it was posted in the, the Grand Blank View, I believe is what it's called now.
Alright, so if anybody wants to address us regarding the master plan update, we'll have a, another opportunity here. So did you want to go over in general what we're proposing here, or where we're at with the process?
Do you want me to go over what Jill, what's in your packet before you?
Yeah, just kind of, and tell us where we're at in the process.
Yep. So this has been in process well before I came in, it's about a two, two and a half year process. It's been reviewed multiple times by multiple entities, it's been before the Genesee County Metropolitan Planning Commission twice. As of September 7th, that was their latest meeting, I was in attendance for that, they had no cause for concerns or comments, and passed it unanimously. Today, we're asking for the board to approve the resolution in front of you, to move the planning commission, or the master plan forward, to move on to the township board.
Any changes in what's before us, since what we saw previously?
So during the, our update to the plan, the township dispersed the updated plan to the surrounding municipalities and agencies. We didn't receive any negative comments or concerns that would affect the surrounding communities. The updated master plan was also required to take any public comment. The future land use map has received numerous correspondence regarding the section seven of our future, proposed future land use map on McCandless Road. The three parcels fronting on McCandless Road have garnered much attention during the comment period, and forced the township to take a closer look, more closely than we would on any other property. After extensive review from Giffords Webster, our water and sewer department, attorney Laddie, and row engineering, Giffords Webster suggested change the McCandless Road parcels from moderate density residential to low-density, single-family residential, due to insufficient utilities in the area. Giffords Webster stated the change to low-density is a minor change, and does not warrant any further delays to the master plan adoption process. The planning department would recommend approval of the resolution to adopt the master plan, with the change for the McCandless Road properties from medium-density to low-density single-family residential.
So the map that we have as part of the letter from Giffords Webster hasn't made that change yet, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Any other changes that were proposed?
That's it.
That's the only change?
Yes.
So what does the, if you can lay out for us, what does the change to the lower density mean for that property from a?
So that does, so going forward, low-density residential will still allow them to build four units per acre, instead of the 10 units per acre that the medium-density allowed. So instead of, they have 7.9 acres there, instead of the potential 79, they could go to roughly 31, 30, 31 units.
And that primarily came about research based on?
Research from row engineering was a big factor in this, and our water and sewer department, there's.
All these available?
Yep, there's multiple issues with stormwater and sanitary sewer in the area.
Sounds like there's a few other items on the front page that Giffords Webster outlined as changes, that one is, that you just described is not in part of this though, right?
No, this is, she, this was done before, this letter was written later that day. So this, my, my recommendation is not part of her memo.
Okay. Any discussion in the planning commission?
Mr. Chairman, could I just ask, just for clarification, so in the Giffords memo, there are 10 properties that are identified, and I think they're, they addressed those properties in their memo, and then number seven on the map that they provided, that is, that is the parcel, the parcels that you just talked about.
Correct.
And so you're proposing a change from, from moderate-density residential to low-density. But everything else on that, on Giffords map stays the same, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, I've reviewed it a couple times, and again, today before this meeting, so so far, I would, Mr. Chairman, make a motion that we approve the updated master plan presented before us, with the noted changes to zone, or to section seven, containing that be switched to low-density residential.
Do, we, I believe we probably need to have the public hearing if it's.
Yes.
Before we.
Yes.
Take, take action on that?
Well, so we'll hold on Larry's motion for a second, I think, by the way, I think the comments that, that the young lady provided in the audience, we could, we could transfer those to the public hearing portion of the minutes, if you deem that appropriate, or if you have more.
I was going to say, sure, I'll, I'll talk more.
We can take what you said and move it forward.
Oh yes, that would be fine.
And I don't think there's any other public.
Public hearing right now, or?
If you want to say something else, you've got the opportunity, you've got three minutes of opportunity, how's that?
I usually run over. I'm a little perturbed now about this issue, because master plan is for planning in the future, and now you've just changed, or are going to change zoning in a map.
We're not changing zoning.
Oh, okay. The master, you're, you're changing the master plan, the future land use, and the map, according to a development proposal that just came in, and the people speaking out against it.
No, that's not true.
Okay. Did I not, did I misunderstand what they were saying then?
I may, and Mr. Laddie, correct me if I'm wrong here, there was a proposal for changing, or a proposal, I guess, to rezone that to multifamily residential.
Mm-hmm.
It was already noted on the master plan, which has nothing to do with approving, no ordinance, or anything like that, changing, it's just a future land use map.
Okay.
RDPW Township Engineering Company is hired by the township to survey that and determine if the utilities are adequate.
Right, but did they do that in result of the proposal, or of the master plan?
Master plan was in place, and started long before.
Okay. I was originally, I was told by your last planner, which I'm glad you maybe have a change in planners, that they would never, you wouldn't ever go backwards in land use, like from medium-density to low, or anything like that, but, because I would, yeah, anyway.
Never say never, and basically, we're not changing though, it's currently.
The current zoning is residential. The current master plan, the original proposed one was recreation.
Right.
And we, when the new township board came in, that's when they kicked it back to the planning commission, because there was changes that we wanted to have looked at. So we felt that going forward, that residential, low-density residential fits that better than medium-density residential.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to note too, for the record, that the current zoning is, as I understand it, is rural estate, which is a, allows the, you know, large lot.
Larger.
Larger lots. So we really aren't by changing it, or putting the low-density residential as the standard.
Well, I personally don't have a problem with that proposed development, so I don't have a problem with that, but you answered my question, I'm not sure whether I'm quite to.
We're sorry to cut into your three minutes, though.
Quite, yeah, I'm not sure whether I'm quite convinced, and do you want me to say my name and address all over again?
You've got to record it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Alright. Anyone else that wants to address the planning commission regarding the master plan updates? Alright, we will close that public hearing. We had a motion on the table from Mr. Anderson, any other discussion on that?
I just want to reiterate my objections to the flexible development category being included in the future land use map, because it's not a zoning district in our current zoning ordinance, so we don't have the specific criteria that we have for all of our other zoning districts in terms of uses and all the other criteria. If we change current zoning to some other zoning, we look to the future land use map, and it's like, future land use maps as flexible development, we just don't have specific criteria like we have for future land use with, you know, neighborhood commercial, or general commercial, or whatever. So I know I raised this objection at the July meeting, and was outvoted, so.
Well, no, we appreciate your, your perspective and input, I guess I would say, and I think we do need to come up with that, in the near future.
Can I speak to that?
Sure.
Quick, Mr. Chairman, I talked with Jill from Giffords just earlier this week, and within the next meeting, we should have something to you, so you guys can, basically, the zoning has to be created, it's already been defined in the current master plan, it was just never, it was there, it was just never defined.
Mm-hmm.
So we're just continuing that on, and we're actually going to get you definitions this time, so that way we can build those going forward for those developments that could potentially go there.
But also, there are other future land uses that are described that don't match up one for one with the zoning as well.
Correct.
So you've got to say, well, it could be this or that from a zoning standpoint.
Correct.
But this is in general, it's kind of a bigger picture, it seems like.
Correct. This, this is broad strokes, is zoning ordinance is, is a more defined zoning.
Appreciate you bringing that up, but we need to make sure that we do follow up with that.
Yes, and I will have that too, fairly, very, very shortly.
Any other discussion? So I believe we had a, a motion on the table that was maybe not supported yet?
It's not supported.
Correct.
All support.
So we have a motion by Mr. Johnson, support by, I'm sorry, a motion by Mr. Anderson, support by Mr. Johnson. Now, do we need to read the resolution, or?
No, I, so I think the resol, I'll just paraphrase it, right?
Sure.
The resolution's just adopting the, the master plan, and the future land use map. Public hearing, September 16th, 2021. So again, you, the meat of it is that you're going to adopt a resolution that adopts the master plan, as lo, as well as the future land use map, and all text maps, charts, and graphs, and other descriptive materials therein, and that, you'll then forward it on, now, this is interesting, because in the statute, the primary responsibility for approving a plan comes from the planning commission. There is an option for the township board to ask to approve it in addition to you guys. And so tonight, you'll be, you'll be carrying out that primary adoption, and then send it out to the township board for their approval. And so I think I've, I think I've got the finer points of the motion, or the resolution. So if you're ready, let's see where we stand.
Mr. Yoncho? The change coming from the planner?
Correct.
Yeah, the motion included the change from the planner, yes.
Any other questions regarding the motion? Alright, we'll start with Mr. Anderson.
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Mr. Banderski?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
The new guy?
Yes.
Ms. Coulter?
No.
Mr. Yoncho?
Yes.
Ms. Hugo?
No.
Mr. Gellings votes yes, I believe that's seven to two.
Yes.
Motion passes. Let it go up to the township board. Next item on our agenda is an introduction to a potential rezoning, and we're basically here to set a public hearing date, once we hear what the proposal's all about, if we're so inclined.
Good evening.
Oh, I should have been doing this one. I think I'm on, maybe? Alright, I'm on. Kevin Johnson, well, I guess I'm 285 now, North LA Drive, Fenton, Michigan. I guess I'm here under Rhodes &amp; Johnson, but I'm also under here under the proposed development of the Grand Blank Enterprise Park. So I thought tonight, just again, to kind of do an intro, the staff thought it was good that I'd come and do that, so I thought we'll just kind of do an old-fashioned, I've done this a bunch with Dan, just as a little side note, again, for those who don't know me, I'm a Grand Blank High School graduate, my family lives here in Grand Blank, my sister teaches in Grand Blank, I was born and raised in Genesee County, so I'm an old-fashioned Flint resident. I live and work in Fenton, we're a commercial builder. I can say that Grand Blank has been as good of county to our family to build, as any of the counties in Genesee County by far, and I can say that with all sincerity, everybody on this board, you has been kind. We have built most of the stuff that Holly and Baldwin Road, and we've recently just finished the Magna project, super proud of that, this community. When we were challenged with it, we were not brought in, but the township stepped up as the opportunity for the current, you did have Magna over there on Holly and Baldwin Road, and they were threatening to leave, there's only two places in the world that make your, the rear backup cameras, and one of those was in Grand Blank, the other's in China. And as they went to expand, there had to meet the next automotive cycle, and the challenge before Grand Blank was to be studious about their process, and hope to retain jobs in, in Michigan instead of in China, and you guys did. So I'm super proud to be a Grand Blank supporter. So that's my sidebar, you guys have been good to my family, the blue buildings have probably been my best customer in the last 25 years, and still do work with me on a handshake, so.
So, in doing this, one of the things that's been key for us, as you guys would agree, that making sure that we attract, right, the right things to the community is important, for people who live here, and for those who work here. And one of the things that's been key for us is we do a lot of automotive suppliers, we work all the way through the, I call it the automotive belt down through I-75. And for the last 10 years, in the last industrial boom after the 08 crash, and all the buildings were bought up, there's been a tremendous shortage in the, in the growth of the automotive to find new property. Recently, I took on a project to help one of our, currently is GM supplier, automotive supplier of the year, the last two years in a row, they currently found a piece of property in Holly, we did a property search from 14 Mile to Flint, a little bit of stigma having workers in Flint, that's been a little bit of trouble for some of the communities to build all the way up in Flint. But we did a property search, and to find property that was large enough to bring a Magna, there was only a few up and down through there. So we bought a piece that was at the corner of Dixie and Saginaw, it's at the county border, for those who are familiar, at the freeway, Dixie Highway, there's a small little piece, we built the first building. So we built Industrial Park, no sewer, no water, but they were willing to do it, because they were the original owners of all those blue buildings on Guinea Drive. I built Guinea Drive, the road myself, not by myself, but, but as, as a team. So they were looking to relocate, to bring the jobs back from 14 Mile in Auburn Hills, back to Genesee County. We couldn't do that, but they were able to partner with that, so I'm proud to say that we are actually extending the sewer and water from Grand Blank on their own nickel down there, and we're currently, been approved from Jeff Sears, and we're currently under that, to spend that two or three million dollars to bring the sewer and water down there. So it's super, a super big need for the automotive suppliers. So in doing that, obviously, this is what I do for a living, but I also have a lot of customers. So I've been dreaming about this piece for a long time, some, some know about the parcel, some don't know about the parcel, but this is the parcel opposite of D. Kramer, right, on I-75, so the opposite of that. There's been challenges in Grand Blank with sewer and water, obviously, I'm involved in it, I'm doing, doing some of the sewer water extension, I'm familiar with the KCI interceptor, I'm familiar with the shortages, anything we've done on Guinea Drive over the last 10 years, has, has had to be approved if there were sewer and water capacity, so I'm fairly well versed on the issues at hand. But there's been this thought that in the last five years, since the Magna project, all of the electric vehicles, and all the automotive suppliers that are in Auburn Hills that want to relocate talent up to Genesee County, there, there are very limited pieces. I'm in the Industrial Park in Fenton, and I own one of the last pieces of land, I just built my new office, there isn't any land left in Fenton, there's very few pieces left at Holly and Baldwin, if there are any, the Magna's the last piece in the county down to, to that side, as going down Holly Road, there is a little bit of a development behind the theaters, that I don't know, that was an amazing spot, I don't know if it was super successful, but there's some stuff there. So there's been this growing need that I believed to be there, regardless of where it was at, to attract Rivian, Amazon, one of the suppliers that makes the, I didn't even know there was such a thing, that coats the shelves that go in all the Amazon new vans, all they do is make the little shelves and coat them, and they're doing them in the old Magna building on Holly and Baldwin Road, and they were looking for a facility. They took another call from the Goyet family, which works for one of the lawyer companies, and they were looking for another automotive supplier company that was about 100,000 square feet, trying to locate in Genesee County next year. So I just think from a, if Kevin's not here, I'm just, I'm just here as a Grand Blank person to say, I think there's a huge need in our community to attract what I consider, I'm a fourth generation, it was my great-grandpa, my grandpa, my dad, myself, so I've been 119 years, we've been doing it. Tried to get out of the construction industry, left to Seattle, came back, I guess it's in my blood, my son's going to school, John Asland gave him a recommendation, he's going to follow John, and go to Ball State, and do that. So super proud of being a family guy, and keeping on the tradition. So I would hope that our kids would have opportunities to be supportive of Genesee County. So in doing that, one of the things that I think is important, regardless whether it's in Grand Blank, Fenton, Flint, or anywhere, is I do believe that we need to have some opportunities to be supportive of the electric vehicles, and the things that are coming our way, and the tier suppliers that do that. And if we don't, that's okay, they'll go somewhere else, but I believe that Genesee County, again, I grew up where you couldn't drive a Jeep or a Ford, you could only drive a GM. And, you know, I have family that was severely tied into that, and that's all we could do, and so I, I'm, that's, that's all I know, and that's what I believe. So I do believe that Genesee County has been an automotive leader for years to come, and I've talked to the township, and I believe that there's an opportunity, not for Kevin, obviously Kevin does this for a living, so I'd like opportunities, but I believe that the county has an opportunity to attract some of this work that has been going to Auburn Hills, and that would, Magna did want to relocate, and they had a radius, that they wanted to be within 20 miles of that current thing, without being all the way up at Buick City, without being all the way down past Auburn Hills. That was their automotive, what they thought their core workers could come and do. So I believe there's an opportunity. That's, that's really what I'm here tonight to talk about, I'm excited about what we put together, because I've been dreaming about it for two, three, four years, and I've got, finally got a few people to listen, right? And so I'm excited about that opportunity. I'm a, I'm a small business guy, I'm not a developer, I'm a debt-free kind of a guy, so this is all kind of a weird kind of a thing for me, but I believe in it, because I think it's good for our community, and I believe there's some businesses that want to come here. So for that, I thought I would give you what I believe is where you're heading, again, it's the same zoning of what you're doing across the street, where I've made my living. So I think, again, it's not spot zoning, I think it's good planning for you guys. So in that, I'm kind of going to show you what it is. So it's basically, there's two parcels, I think technically there's three, I cry at my sales meeting at my office too, so sorry about that. And Jay's going to attest to that. So, but I'm a softy, so that's okay. So there's, there's technically two large pieces, I think there's a little piece at the front, but basically, it's the tree farm, which is about 80 acres, and the piece to the north, which is, I guess, farmland, closer to the freeway, is about 71 acres. So together, the two pieces would make 150. They're technically two different separate purchase agreements, but the entities that are formed are buying both, and will combine them, I just, we can't combine them yet until they're rezoned, but that process will happen. So we've worked with, for planning, so people you're familiar with, John Asland, who's been, again, done most of our buildings, and a lot of stuff in Grand Blank, maybe Mr. Bush, or somebody's familiar with. Griggs Quater, Rudy and Chris have done most of the planning, are good here, we worked with them along with Jack Wheatley, behind the scenes, to help us do some of this, so we worked with Row, and with Griggs Quater to do this. So we've done all the due diligence, before we even got, you know, very far into this, both on sewer, water, road, utilities, and I can speak to each one, but basically, in essence, it's 150. But basically, in essence, it's 150 acres combined. There's some frontage on I-75, which I think would be attractive to all the automotive suppliers. I think it's been good to D. Kramer, it's been good to us in Fenton, I think there's some value there. I think the road is all seasons or Class A, you know, just before D. Kramer, so up until that next to, New Tech Drive?
Yes.
New Tech Drive. So that needs to be, to be upgraded, and we can talk about that. So that's kind of what the overall Blank looks like. So then I've done a, a little color version to talk about the good things and the bad things. So this is what I think it could look like and what I believe it should to be attractive to the people that would want to come into our community. Has to be enough flexibility, so I think it'd be a condo project, so that nobody be locked into little teeny parcels or how big they would be. But in essence, this is kind of like a conditional rezoning and a non-conditional. Like I told Marie and, and the board, you pick. You're going to have a submission for this first building on October 4th. So technically, it's a conditional zone, but I'm standing here tonight, and it can't be a conditional zoning because I haven't implied. So I'm kind of giving plain, you know, both sides that you, as a township, can see it's technically, I think the best rezoning is not blanket rezoning, it's with condition that, that what you see is coming, and this kind of forecasts this. So what this really shows you is that this is the tree farm piece, again, yeah, obviously, thank you so much. Thank you so much. So thanks. So this is the tree farm piece. This is almost exactly where the two tracker that I've gone in my little Jeep and driven out there. It's in good shape, as long as on a fairly dry day, my Jeep can get too dirty. And so that's about where the two tracker is. Again, there's residents here, and there's residents here. And so what our intention would be, working with Chris and Rudy and with Row, is to try to make as much buffer for the residents as possible. Again, forget which development goes there, the job would be to do that. The good news is, this property lays out with all the wetlands happen to be near the residents. So one of the things that we'd like to do or propose to do is to give the wetlands away so they're not buildable, or they're not relocatable. And so I guess that's called a wetland, what's it called? It's called a dedicated wetland conservation easement, which I guess is a way to deed away wetlands to protect the neighbors so that they're not able to be mitigated or relocated. So that would basically be given to the DEQ. And in doing this, this would give, instead of the residents having a 50-foot buffer, and if you've been out there, it's a beautiful wetlands. All the trees would stay, all the wetlands would be a nature park. But basically, that's about seven acres or just over that. And that would allow, instead of a 50-foot buffer for the residents, that would be 300 to 400 some feet of natural buffer uncontrollable. So leave all the trees, all the wetlands, and then our goal would actually be to work with the DEQ to make sure that water is actually a real pond, so we can increase the ducks and the things like that, and actually make that part of a natural feature like the Eduardo's or like the Galileo, right? Where people sit out there and eat, which I love that. So the goal would be, this first building, we face the glass and let the employees have a place to eat. And again, what we could call, I'd call employer retention, right? Things of how we get people back to work, give them a nice place to work, maybe a walking park or something like that, like they've done at the hospital. Something for the employees. But basically, from a resident standpoint, it would give this huge buffer, and I think that's good planning. The second thing that we identified was there was, again, I can talk about the industrial view, that's the easy part, but the few that I want to talk about is, again, things to protect the residents. So right here, there was a drive here where the old residents were, there's a, I think there's like a T or a stub there, there's a few houses there. So because the wetlands go here, we can give away, this is a conservation easement, so we can protect everything on this side. And that's about two acres or some of wetlands, so we can protect all of this, and again, puts a big buffer between those couple of houses. That leaves this little piece here left, what do we do with this, how do we protect the neighbors? So our goal was to give them a park, so just deed away an acre and change of park. Could be a dog park, could be a walking park, but basically make it a deeded park so that it gives that 100-foot or 200-foot buffer to allow the neighbors to feel like we've tried to protect them and something we can get back to them. So from a high level, the color drawings, this shows you, my first thought is how would we protect the neighbors? Because before we talked to Dennis, Jack Wheatley, anybody, that was the first thought. So the very first thing we did was how would we do that? How would the township be protected so they know it was going to stay that way? And so with, with Row and with Griggs, they suggested conservation easement. Not an expert in it, but they, following the recommendation, they thought that was the safest. So that's kind of what we showed. That's the, that's the township spot. And that leaves two regulated wetlands kind of left that we've done our wetland study, but that, you know, the tree farm had a, had some water there where they used, I think, for pumping and things like that, and that's also near the wetlands, so that becomes regulated, so there's a regulated piece there close to the freeway. I think it kind of runs along the ditch, and then there's a piece up here where the, is really the big tree. There's a few spots, there's a couple of little, I call it like little spots, a couple in there that will get taken care of. Like we did with the Magna piece. But ultimately, I think from a wetlands, neighbors thing, that, that planning's been done. So let me just talk about, a little bit about the project, and then I'll show you a couple of things. So the thought was, similar to what we did at Guinea Drive, right, the drive would need to be built. So using the tuck, you know, the tuckle that's already there, we wouldn't need to disturb much of the land, much of the trees, we could leave it fairly good. Obviously, we'll have to do some land balancing, I'm not, you know, an expert in that, but we'd have to do some land balancing to build the road. But the goal would be to build the road through this first phase, put this building in the back by the wetlands, make it a nature preserve, kind of do all that. And in essence, then from the township standpoint, it wouldn't be like, hey, there's a building at the front and a road, and we'll let you know what it's going to be later. So this really shows our hand for the whole thing. It forces the developer to spend almost all their money up front to build the road and to, to parcel it out. So in doing that, we'd have to bring the 12-inch water main, right? So the water would have to be, we worked with the township to make sure that water would be there, that would be there. Obviously, with the sewer, we're, like I said, we're involved in the KCI Interceptor. We believe in, and clearly understand that the township is upgrading their sewer, so that capacity will be there. The road, because we have the first project already online and approved or already planned on it, we actually helped the township submit. I don't know if it's, is it public record yet?
Say that again?
The approval's a public record?
For?
I, I think we should hold.
Good.
Yeah.
So we're working on making sure that's upgraded, to make sure that there's no road commission or traffic. So we'll work together for that, to make sure that all road, sewer, water, and consumers, to make sure the infrastructure's there. Again, with Genesis being involved and all things like that, so we've tried to do all of our due diligence before we ever showed anything. And that's kind of what we're here tonight, we've kind of been doing all this for a long period of time. So that's kind of the color. Then, this is one, this is a rendering of the project, I just got it today from John, so it doesn't have, it has the front. But this is the stuff that we're talking about bringing, so this would be somebody relocating, a national company with about 600 employees. They wouldn't all relocate here, but they would keep and leave their, or they would put their headquarters here in Grand Blank. It'd be a concrete tilt-up building, which we've all desired to have up in these areas, which we consider the non-metal buildings, right? The non-b buildings I've built for a lot of years that nobody really likes, all the crinkle buildings. And those crinkle buildings have gotten better to the, I call it a thermal insulated panel, which kind of mimics a tilt-wall. But the most attractive to large developers are those tilt-wall buildings down south in most places, but they're also the most expensive. So the goal would be to bring, this is actually the rendering, this is actually the building of the front door of this, of this new facility. So this is kind of like, this is, goes with the color rendering to say this is, and then obviously in the corner, all the employees could look out the glass, and could look over the wetlands, and so it'd be a beautiful building for the employees, and obviously employer retention is big. So I'll take some questions, but I just, I wanted to like show you a whole audience, but obviously, we would still have to continue our due diligence to do a complete site plan, to be ready for our site plan submission in October, to be heard in November. So while we've got some work to do, and a ton of work to do, we have to finish this out. But this kind of represents showing you what we intend to do on rezoning. This is the beauty, right? But this is really the function of just showing you what we intend, we think is good for Grand Blank. Both for the current need, and I believe from a, from the voice on the street, I think we have a two, three, four, five-year window to really attract the next batch of industrial, while the automotive suppliers are catching up with the semiconductors. Got a year or two before they can truly catch up. Most of my tier-one suppliers are forecasted for two to three years as fast as they can catch up to produce these so they don't get in another shortage, whether it's fasteners or anything else. So I believe we have two or three years of that plus some growth potential. So I think there's just a huge need, and it's a good spot for it. So hoping for questions, Mr. Chairman.
Any questions from planning commission members? Mr. Anderson?
Okay.
I can bring it over there, show you.
Yeah, I think you're saying, the area proposed, the park area, and we've got just a few residential homes to kind of back up to it, right there, yeah. The park, who would that be benefit, who would maintain that, or what have we done with that?
We're open to, again, we could deed it over and give it to them and, you know, help maintain it, or we could, whatever. Again, we're open to what you guys think is best. Again, I don't build dog parks or kid parks, right, is that playing? But I think with the engineering's advice and township's advice, we, we would follow your recommendation of how to, whether it takes it or not, how we, whether we give them a place at, or I don't, like I said, I thought dog park, but somebody says, well, why do you all like dogs? I'm like, I don't know.
And you can't use?
Right, I know, so our, our thought was to create a nice shape, right, that kind of matched this for a buffer, and then give it away as a park, however you.
Well, what I see, and this just came to me as you were making the presentation there, is for that section is, I could see a lot of homes along there, residential along there, if it's not well maintained, being a place where they dump their leaves in the fall, drop garbage, throw a brush back there. I would want to see somebody be kind of responsible for maintaining that.
And we could, like I said, it could be not even a park, if we thought it'd be better to be, like I said, more like the conservation easement. We could just continue that conservation easement, and we could landscape it and make it an easement, deed it that way too. Again, we're just trying to, in good spirits, be creative to be friendly to the residents as best possible, so I'm open to either way.
Okay.
That's just a.
And then just, I guess we just west of, of that park area, you got just a few homes there, you preference to 100-foot buffer? Yeah, great.
Yeah, because the conservation, this, this would be out here, so it's probably more than 100, because this would be that wetland conservation easement, so you wouldn't be able to build on this side. So technically, this would be up maybe.
There's eight homes there, maybe?
So this, this, that's why this wetlands would be the, the boundary, so that would be this large swath. And we could get, you know, like at the planning commission, we could get that, you could have Chris and Rudy, you know, to mention it, to those points.
And I drove through there today and just kind of looked at it, and I'm, there's quite a few tree stuff there, but they're all maples and such trees that will lose their leaves in the fall. And I thought about was some, a better buffer for those particular homes. 100 feet seems like a lot, but this room is approximately 65 or 70. So it's not as big as it seems. Maybe some kind of pine trees, cedar trees, or maybe even.
And we talked about relocating some of these pine trees. One of the guys was like, hey, I can buy a tree digger for nine grand, and we could run around and move the trees. And I'm like, great. I'm like, I don't know what I'd do with a tree digger, but can you move those trees, Mike?
Yes.
So we thought, same thing, we thought about keeping a lot of these trees, moving them back to this first development, again, you know.
Yeah, other, I think the, the plan looks okay to me, other than that, I think would, those residents that built there before this was all proposed deserve some kind of a forethought into that.
Absolutely agree with that.
Chairman, I have a couple of questions. You have that large open space there in the top half.
Yeah, it's, it's a salt farm field right now, it's all, it's all been farmed. So we, what we tried to show here was the tree farm, as we think it's kind of clumped, and that's what these little shades are. There's the water that was used for the tree farm for pumping, I think for irrigation, and, and there's some trees down here. And then there was like a, like a drainage dish, there's a little tree woods here, it's just a like, I call it the old, I think this was like a couple of farm fields right where they have the tree line that goes between the field, but there's a little bit of trees here. But this is, this is easy to drive, it's like driving through, you can drive your, your, almost.
It's open farm as far as I recall.
So this is pretty much driving, and then this right here is all woods and.
You plan to leave it all open farmland, or?
Well, obviously, the goal would eventually be, you know, track, track, it'd be nice to track one of the Rivian or a supplier of theirs, or, you know, any of the automotive guys that are, Tesla and that were in Genesee County, but electric vehicle person, that would be supportive of our county and our automotive guys, it'd be great. So somebody like that, again, I would consider all the buildings across the street. We even built TMI down Quality Way, which is Tom Miller's place, and they relocated on Thompson Road, the building on Thompson, the white building. It's nice, it was a nice office there, so that was their office there, and they're a supplier to the automotive. They built airhouses that go on the roads. There's all these weird people that, I mean, weird businesses that support them, but there's a lot of them out there.
So what?
One other question.
Sure.
Best case scenario would be like how many employees, no, in terms of, yeah.
This one?
Well, best case, if you also develop the top half, best case for in terms of new jobs, any thoughts about that?
Thousand.
Yeah.
For sure. Yeah, it would easily, Magna brought 600. I think, you know, now on the township side, I think that obviously the tax base, the tap fees, I mean, there's, you know, the, the 100 acre, the acres that we're doing down there. We forecasted, wrote it, forecasted for us, it's $2 million of sewer and water tap fees for Grand Blank. And we're paying the two or three million to extend it. So on our nickel, Jacey laughed at me, she goes, wait a minute, we're, we're doing that? And then, yeah, oh, yeah, that's how that works. So we're glad to be supported. So there'd be a lot of tap fees, a lot of tax, and I think a lot of employees. But again, I think it would be a nice, yeah, I think it would be good to track employees.
Full build-out, you've got nine different parcels that you're showing.
Yeah, just to ensure on this one, I think I got another one to show you. I got one, Chris, I had to, just to show you that without coloring.
We do put north at the top.
Oh. Okay, so technically, north would be like this, maybe, right? There, here, so how about that?
No, stand it, stand it straight up.
Yeah, just stand it.
Okay. That's north.
There we go. So in essence, what I tried to show is condo parcels that are flexible, that I think that have been popular in Genesee, in Grand Blank. So I would consider 10 to 15-acre parcels of what you guys have been your bread and butter up and down Guinea Drive, up and up and down. Magna was 215, it was put together, so that was a 30. So what this kind of shows are, these, this is an 11, it's an 11, here's a 15, here's an 11. The first guy, he's got all the wetlands, so he doesn't really count, but he's probably 11 to 10 to 15 and usable, but he's got a little wetland, so he's a 25. This one, and these would be condos, so they'd be flexible, the townships, you know, we do the condo docs like you guys would recommend, we do it with you. This one shows 11, this one shows a 27, this one shows a 25. So these could attract a Magna of the world. Again, I guess somebody bigger than Magna, not, you know, Magna's probably one of the bigger suppliers ever been in Genesee County, both for employer and for buildings. You know, again, there's a few of the old buildings up by the airport, I think that were about that size, but they would have been in the distribution center. There was an AI building, and a couple of those are distribution centers, but not, not many that aren't worth the GM factories themselves. So somebody like that could, could, you know, do that, combine a couple, kind of things like that. I think there'll be, I think there'll be more distribution, I think there'll be a huge need for warehouse. I think about all the, you know, obviously Amazon to the world, but all of that online, and everybody staying home, working from home, all of those things need distribution centers. So the first thing that we did, and again, I'm just repeating what I've learned, that when we bought the piece on Dixie Highway, people down there, I was there today. The first building is a distribution, because they told me, we have to get the distribution built, so when we start making parts, we're already distributing. So I would anticipate, it would be, I'm sure a warehouse and distribution person would want to come here, because then they could start to manufacture or assemble. The company that's next to Magna, MGA, it's a little teeny company, they test, you know, dummies ECNTV, or they run the car and do it for the dummies, and they test the seats to make sure they work. They wanted to test Magna's little widgets, so they put their building next to Magna to hope to get their business. I think that is kind of that, having a good place for all that good life to happen attracts, good things attract good things. So this is kind of that whole, but I think you'd stop it after the first, just kind of start, stop the road here, and give yourself some flexibility, you know, if you needed a piece a little bit, maybe stop it at that first one. But we, we'd have to build that million dollars or whatever that road, it's a big number, I don't know what the road cost would be, but spend all the money, get it all the way back there to the, to this first project. So it would be a full commitment to, to the front road, to make sure that the road's good, the utilities are good, it'd be a full commitment.
Got a question regarding procedure. Got a question regarding procedure, them going forward. A conditional rezoning, they have to present what the conditions are, correct? We can't state what the conditions are, so that's something you have to consider, is...
We, I think we turned it as nonconditional rezoning, but we were forthright to let you know that we are treating it like a conditional, and we're also switching it to that. But we, again, we want to be, I really want to be on this side, and we can do it either way, because we are doing it with a proposed project. But ultimately, we want, we want you guys to be happy with the process. So if it's easier to do a conditional, we're, and we're glad to do that. So it's just more of a procedural thing, if you think that's the more appropriate way of doing it. Because we're going to turn in October 4th for the.
Seven.
October 7th.
Yep. October 7th would be the requested public hearing for the first phase of the rezoning to the planning commission, and then I believe the 19th would be the township board.
And I have to turn it in for a site plan, as my deadline is October 4th. So I have to turn in for my full site plan, October 4th, before the rezoning. So I'll be prepared to have it be conditional, if that's the way you feel is good.
In my opinion, if he presents a rezoning, he can put in the conditions he wants on it without a site plan, without being a conditional rezoning, correct?
Yeah, well, sure, I mean, he could come, he could come in with a full-blown site plan and say to the planning commission, here's what I have, here's what I'm going to do, but, but he isn't legally bound to do that if it's not a conditional rezoning. So I'm going to defer to Jeremy, obviously, and for you guys to talk, but it seems to be, from planning commission's standpoint, usually, usually the more commitment, the better.
We're glad to, we're glad to do it that way. Or again, we're fully committed, we'll have our plans ready, we'll, we'll have that rezoning committed, we'll be ready.
And as part of that, you'll list the different conditions that you're willing to make.
Yep. Whatever, again, we're willing to be.
Like I said, we can't tell you, here's the conditions you have to sign up for.
Correct.
To propose them.
Correct.
Mr. Gellings, maybe he, they shouldn't go for it, correct me if I'm wrong, if that way, this is kind of a flowing project. So if he brings, from my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, if they do conditions, we can back them off, but he can't add more, because then he'd have to start over again, correct?
Well, what we're, so whatever, whatever's presented at the, at the rezoning, and again, the rezoning's for the entire piece, and I think, and your conditions are going to focus on the wetlands preservation and the buffers and things like that.
Correct.
And so, but there's going to be a large piece of this that is going to be still, well, it'll be vacant, and we, and there won't be conceptual on it, right? So, so really, all the certainty that you're going to get will be the features that I think you'll see potentially for the conditional, for the first, really what I guess call first phase. But I think the rest of it will be, you will be taking that leap of faith, but at that point, maybe it's not, it doesn't matter that much to you, once, once the development is, the configuration's going to be set.
Yeah, we're going to be doing, we have to get the road all the way back here, too. We have to get all the way to here to make this first phase work. And those plans, we turn in October 4th. We're committed all the way through there, we just don't know if that's the best, we have met with the fire chief, if that, you know, does it need to be a T or a circle or stop it right there? We haven't, we haven't done the, you know, what the fire chief would like to see there, and where to do the loop on the water main. So we need a little homework. So we need to get at least past here to the property line in good faith. So we're fully committed on that first 80 and the other. I mean, we're fully committed on all of it. But the road is, we're all, we're talking about is a question.
Well, and the master deed, too, will spell out a lot of these things, and we'll have a lot of those conditions built into it that won't, for the future phases, that will have to be adhered to.
Yeah. So again, in going forth, I would agree with you, a blanket was what I was trying to avoid, to, in good faith, show as much as I could, and really, you can follow your lead on how you guys see it best. We're committed with conditions or without commissions, we want to do the right thing and see the township and the residents support it.
All right, so the action for tonight is to set a public hearing?
Public hearing for October 7th.
And then you need to set it under the Grand Blank Enterprise Park LLC is technically the owner. I'm the representative. But I don't need any pitchforks for Rhodes &amp; Johnson.
Grand Blank Enterprise Park LLC.
Yes. And that'll be the name of the park, and that'll be the name of the ownership group, and the name of the, I think the driveway, I think they named it Grand Blank Enterprise Road or something. It'll be really easy.
October, what was the date?
7th.
Okay. I'll go ahead and make the motion that we set a public hearing date for the proposed property, Grand Blank Enterprise Park LLC.
Support. All right, we have a motion by Mr. Anderson, support by Mr. Bush. Any further discussions? All right, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes 9-0.
Thanks. Any, you have a preference, Mr. Chairman, on whether you'd like me to make it more conditional or blanket? I'm open for your, I'm open for a recommendation.
I think, as our attorney mentioned, the more conditions, you can show us a better offer, because we have to look at the property, if it's just a straight rezoning, if anything could go in there.
We'll do that. We'll come up with some conditions, and we'll try to get that first phase all, which will include the road and the parcels, obviously, to be condoed, but we'll get that all cleaned up for you. Do you have a preference, Mr. Anderson, or would you like that to be a conservation easement instead of a park? I'm glad to switch that, and we could plant the trees. We have a tree expert on the committee, we could figure out how to get some trees over there. I'm glad to do that, it's just.
I'm okay with, go ahead.
Can I make a suggestion? I'd like to know, do we know if there's an HOA in that?
I don't. I was just trying, again, I just, I just was trying to put myself in the residence and go, you know, how do they, how will they feel? I just want someone to feel like I thought of them, right? So.
We're talking to them.
Well, that's, that's my suggestion. If there is an HOA, maybe get their, their take on it.
Can you give me the name of that?
I, we don't keep track of the HOAs.
Okay. All right, we'll go to work. I'll, thank you, I appreciate that.
I would think their input would be, would be good.
I'd be glad to do, like I said, either or. Again, I just don't know what.
I would just hate to see us say, okay, we've dedicated, this is a park, and then